There's no reason to feel bully. I'm not a bully. Do I look like a bully?
Why don't you mind your business?
I am.
Mind your business.
You are my business. Take your mask off.
You weren't, you were not invited in.
Um, we were.
By who?
By the, the doorman.
We need this country to be for Americans.
Cool it, man.
No, you guys cool it. I didn't accost you guys. You guys accosted me.
Yeah, these are private offices versus public.
Do you have a permit? Do you have a permit?
Take your mask off or get out of our city hall.
Absolutely not.
It's been a long day for you guys.
Let me verify for that one because I don't know who actually handles this meetings.
But you don't have to be all up in my face.
I'm trying to get behind the camera.
You're not gonna get behind it.
How come?
Because then you'd be behind me.
I'd like to ask the chief of police and the city hall who the four individuals are that have uh masks on, uh dark sunglasses on, uh and they are recording uh the meeting.
Your guys are nitwits and a public meeting is a public meeting.
Yeah.
There are four men trying to protect me from you.
You may be allowed, but you were not invited in.
Okay.
That's a professional camera.
It's an iPhone.
Possible they have holding firearms right now.
Hi, you are currently being recorded.
Everything is on camera now.
These days cameras are recording our every move and now even some parked cars could be watching you.
Continuously monitoring the environment.
Yep, being recorded.
How about this one? Nope, not turned on. This one, yep. Hello.
Everything is on camera.
I can't be legal. I'm never leaving home again.
What if I told you that right now you are being watched?
Good morning, everybody. We are here in the Orange County at the Irvine Civic Center. So they got a police department here and I think a city hall over here too. We're gonna go explore around. Um, we have seen a couple officers walking around the parking lot randomly, so um we'll see what happens here. Um, make sure they respect our rights to film in public.
If you're digging my content, smash that like button on this video so the YouTube algorithm bots continue to present our important message to others.
A lot of cars parked in the no parking zone. It's a nice little city hall set up here. I wonder what kind of news story is being covered here today. Alright guys, they have the California flag and Old Glory right there flying high. Uh, this is actually kind of a unique building. Um, these pavers, woo, expensive. And you know, they bought them at a premium because they are city, so they didn't get no discounts. Uh, these pavers are wildly expensive, all the stonework. But yeah, alright, here we go. Off the bat, they have a ginormous camera at us. Some TVs on display over here. Eleven seconds in. I don't know what's going on here. I'm being stared at. I don't know what's going on here. I just pointed over there and she was like turned around and stared. We're having to stare off of him, like. Hold on, that's a touchscreen?
Yeah. Road construction. Let's see what's on all of road construction.
Apparently nothing. I'm gonna film you guys going in. Damn, they got more touchscreens? Damn, the inside of this place is crazy. Look at all this marble. That's crazy. This is the craziest city hall I've ever seen. They really milked the taxpayers on this one. Look at the stonework. Continued from the outside, all this stone. Continued from the outside and all they did is uh they put a glaze over it. That's crazy. That's one hell of a stone floor order. Records right there. Uh, I'm gonna see if that's where I file a FOIA request later. Alright guys, keep in mind that um when we all pay our taxes and we contribute to um, you know, contribute a lot of our money to uh decisions that, you know, important. You know, we talked about uh participating in the vote. Even if you don't participate in the giant elections, presidential races, um senate, things like that. Participate locally so that you can control where the spending is done in your community. Um, you know, it is what it is. The government's gonna waste money at all the time, but you know, um, just the flooring alone here is the amount of money that one of us will pay in taxes through our entire life. Um, and a decision to go with something like this instead of something a little more basic is just one of the tiny little elements of government spending that has just gone way out of control. Um, you don't need some crazy building with so much empty square footage. Um, not necessary, you know, to make a city function. I mean, just, you have this whole area of empty space for one desk. This is part of the wastefulness, you know, um and we're not holding our government accountable to be like, hey, you don't need this monstrosity to run the city. So this is a park they're gonna build. With an overlook, an outdoor theater, water feature, a lake.
Maybe, I don't know.
That's crazy.
Looking at it for a minute. They kept showing like different shots of like renderings of parks. I was like, uh, I had to get a building here.
It looks like it. I mean, why else would it be here? Wow, that is, you know, there's building a park and then there's building a And this is what uh, and of course the residents up here are probably gonna vote for it, you know? There's no wasted money. We absolutely need that monstrosity. Man, plant some grass, throw some baseball fields.
You got like a plan of like plants on it? Yeah, no, that actually is something that they're planning.
That's crazy. So they have this sign, but it's hidden because unless you walk over to it, that is all that's visible. Go ahead and go up the elevator. I'm gonna push the beautiful call button. That was quick. I didn't even push it and it dunged right as I pushed it. You look like a menace.
Yeah, why?
Simple looks like a menace.
Why?
I don't know.
Damn. I was about to ask if these lazy fucks not use the stairs?
They made it out of clay. Yeah, high schoolers made them out of clay. I kinda like the chain one. That's pretty cool, creative. I actually think the chain is the most creative one. The chain. They made it out of clay.
It's out of clay?
Yeah. I mean, everybody makes things, but that's cool. I can fit fifteen cubicles right here. Clay Lounge slash Wellness Center. Random desk. Back you chair. Uh, this is the cafeteria apparently. Damn, it's like the nicest break room I've ever seen. There you go. Education received. You like the education, really? Now she's telling the cop.
Sorry, are you recording me?
What happened?
Are you recording me?
Yeah, everybody. Yeah. You're fine. I'm just recording everybody as they come in and out and, yeah. Very loud jacket. We do Adedino's government buildings and such.
Yeah, these are private offices versus public. So you guys are totally good right there. It's just, this slider is kind of a
Yeah, because we didn't sign up sign, so.
Yeah, sorry. That's where the, the badge, you can badge in and stuff, so that allows you to come in through the private, so.
I mean, we said it open, so.
No, I appreciate it, yeah.
Oh, but thank you though. Thanks for that phone. Future white, what might crack your cameras, though?
You have a beautiful smile.
You're beautiful.
Did you say you're beautiful? He has a beautiful smile though.
He's a beautiful person, ladies.
You said you're beautiful.
Beautiful person.
Okay, that's my line.
How good is it, sir? Sure.
Don't let him in the city park now.
So I guess you have to come here and like don't contact.
Oh, okay. As long as you can still file one.
How guys are you doing?
Uh, just waiting for the city clerk. They said they called her.
Do you guys mind waiting out the lobby?
What happened?
Do you mind waiting out the lobby?
Well, that's fine. I don't mind reading right here. But are they calling them for sure though, or is there anybody to check?
My understanding, if you guys could wait out in the lobby, that'd be great. Thanks so much.
Is there a reason I have to wait? Because it says non-authorized past that point.
Right, I understand. This is a secured spot here. If you guys could wait.
The door was just open, so.
I understand.
Okay, alright.
Thanks so much, guys.
Is the city clerk coming though?
But can you verify that there is a city clerk coming?
That's my understanding. I'll figure out for you. If you guys can just wait in the lobby, I'll get back to you.
Alright, alright, yep. It's a public lobby right here too, though. That's weird.
It's crazy.
Yeah. But to not cause a stink and because there is technically a sign right here. So they do have a sign if, so God, there, move his left arm. So for entry to the offices, yes. So because that sign exists and I kinda knew that going in, um we're gonna have to wait out here.
You gotta take off ten pounds.
Right?
What can I do for you guys?
We wanted to do a paper FOIA request.
I'm sorry?
We wanna do a paper FOIA request?
Oh yeah, absolutely. Okay, um, why don't I go get a piece of paper and that way we just make sure I get everything?
Do you have the form or is it just a piece of paper?
Yeah, I'll print it for you. Yeah, absolutely. Have a seat. I'll be right back.
Yep.
Thank you. Do you guys mind coming down with me to records? I have trouble with my printer, but they have the forms down there.
Oh, that's fine.
Yeah.
Or down here?
Do you mind if we don't take elevators? Because I, I'll be honest.
I don't care. I don't care. It don't matter to me. Well, it's downstairs. Not much of a workout.
I was actually stuck in one years and years and years ago, but um it felt like an eternity. It was literally like only three minutes.
Well, I had a friend who was at a hotel and it was like the Flamingo Hotel in Vegas.
Yeah.
And they were jumping up and down the elevator since it, it, the elevator panicked and it shut it off for like four hours. They were stuck in there.
See, and that's, well, let me tell you, when you're in there, and I'm claustrophobic, admittedly.
Yeah.
So that's why I said it seemed like an eternity, but literally my sister, she was in labor one time, years ago. I climbed up nine flights of stairs at the hospital, but he gets better. Then we forgot the camera.
Oh no.
So I went all the way back down.
Oh no.
And I went all the way back up. I totally did. And I'm like, you know what? It's not beneath me. I drive everything to work out. And so like it kills me if I actually have to get anyone.
Absolutely.
If I absolutely have to, I went to a restaurant not that long ago.
Yeah.
And I climbed like same things like ten flights of stairs and uh only to get there, at least one side, no access
Oh no. Oh no.
All the way back down.
And then get the elevator.
I kid you not, that's a true story. Come on in. Yeah. Do you have, well, I can get you a clipboard if you want.
Um, or the counter's fine.
There you go.
So I'm actually teaching.
Thank you, my guy. So this how we phone a records request works and this can learn?
Five to ten days, they'll send us all the information and yeah, pretty quick, pretty painless. But that's how you do it, guys. Is he even showing it? Yeah, he is showing. Damn, look at that. And that is how you do a public records request. Hey, I did put the email in the wrong spot, but
I'm not gonna hold it against you.
Right?
Okay. Okay, yeah, we'll get this done.
Hey, why don't you guys take your mask off?
Why don't you mind your own business?
I am. Take your mask off.
Why don't you mind your own business?
You're in our city hall. Take your mask off.
Your business.
I am.
Mind your business.
You are my business. Take your mask off. You're in our city hall.
Absolutely not.
Do you live in Irvine? Take your mask off or get out of our city hall.
Absolutely not.
You have no business in our city hall.
Absolutely, we do.
You just did business.
Pardon me. You're in our city hall. Take your mask off.
Absolutely not.
Well, you will be arrested tonight because it's not gonna be allowed in the city council meeting, so get ready.
Mm-hmm. You're an idiot.
Really?
You're an idiot.
In the good old days.
In the good old days, I would've dropped you on the ground already.
You think so?
Yeah.
You think so? You don't know who I am, dude.
I don't need to know who you are. You're an idiot.
You're threatening me. You're threatening me.
Idiot.
You're an, you're an idiot. What's your name, buddy?
I don't need to know. You don't need to know my name. Dumbass.
Really?
Yeah, you absolutely are.
You're lucky.
You're behaving like a fool. Go take a nap.
Hey folks, can you give us some space?
Well, we're in public and it's a conversation about us, so I'm allowed to
I, I understand, but, but you know, like
I'm, I'm doing exactly what I'm lawfully allowed to do.
Go get a job and contribute to our economy.
I'm retired. I've already done that for twenty years. Thank you very much.
I don't think so. I don't think so. Take your hat off.
I'm not taking anything off.
Yeah, that's because you're a loser.
Coming up and accosting me.
You're a loser.
Okay, you're an idiot.
What I'd like is for this not to escalate, alright?
Yeah, I'm not escalating. He approached me. Have we not been cordial the entire time we've been here with everybody? Okay, so don't, don't tell me what to do. I didn't do anything.
I was making a general statement. I wasn't talking to you.
Alright. I've been cordial to everybody, including yourself, so. And he smirks and thinks it's funny. That's great. Professionalism out the window because of him.
Oh, hey, that's your ID or is that your size? That's what your girlfriend said last night, dude.
When did masks become unlawful? When did masks become unlawful?
Oh, it's just because they look scary.
This looks scary? This looks scary?
Yes, it does.
Okay, alright. What an idiot, dude. Oh hey, the idiot's back. Look at this dumbass.
We'll, we'll find you. We'll find you.
You ain't finding anything. You're a dumbass. Why don't you go take your pills and go have a nice day? Aw, what's your son gonna do? Get educated also?
He's six eight.
Aw. Aw. Then he's defending our rights. He wouldn't trample on it like your dumbass.
What, are you saying bad words?
What's that?
Are you cussing or no?
Am I cussing?
I thought I heard you say some bad words.
I said dumbass. Ass isn't necessarily a cussing.
Well, the way you're saying it's not polite.
Okay, and he's being polite and you haven't addressed him for being impolite? I said this gentleman was impolite. He came up and accosted us. Okay, then shut the [__] up. Stay out of it. Like, it's not your business.
Cool it, man.
No, you guys cool it. I didn't accost you guys. You guys accosted me.
Words are at, words in a city hall, that's not
What law does that break? What law is that breaking? What's wrong with you guys? But nobody addresses the fact that that guy came up and accosted us. It's one-way upsetness.
We did have no folks, but unfortunately we ran out. But yes, yeah, be free to take notes starting the question. Thank you so much.
Oh my gosh, welcome.
Out of you couldn't hear what was being said, but apparently he's a lawyer for the city. And the officer was asking him, are they allowed to be here? What are the rules? Blah, blah, blah. And the attorney said, yeah, we're fine.
Are any member of the public able to attend the conference or not?
Uh, it's uh via RSP, but yes.
What's the person?
Like who signed up?
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Can he sign up?
Did he sign up?
No, can he sign up?
Uh, yes, technically if you'd like more information.
What's important?
It's in regards to the um, the uh planning commission, the state new housing ordinance.
Oh.
And I've ordered that more like, um
Well, I wanna hear about that.
But the new housing developments and uh more information regarding that.
So we can sign in and go, okay, perfect. Alright. You need a, oh, somebody didn't put their, so we don't have to put all information, just?
Uh, that person didn't.
You didn't put an email or?
Yeah, for more information.
Okay, alright, um Where'd they, where'd they go? Hey, you can sign in first. I gotta sign in for people, but
I got you.
Okay. Hey, where did Simple go? Call him a bit. Simple, oh there.
Thank you, thank you, Cory.
I think we should stop telling people about these things right now.
Thanks, okay.
Do I need a badge?
Uh, if you'd like to.
A name tag?
Yeah.
Alright, or I, or there, she didn't take one either, so that's fine. I don't need one. Alright, uh, sign in, guys. Yeah. It's about the housing stuff we were just talking about yesterday, so.
This is the Irvine master plan. This is just a little bit of the information regarding the master plan. Um, and just the different elements of the master plan. Uh, and you can see, these are the things that fit together. They're really culture, architecture, infrastructure, and safety. All of these ten items of our master plan work together in concert uh to create the city that, that we have to have. Exceptional quality of life. There's like six cameras. What are these cameras? And some of, what are all these cameras? What is it?
We're just attending the meeting. We were invi, we were invited in here.
You weren't, you were not invited in.
Um, we were.
By who?
By the, the doorman.
No, sorry.
Okay.
That's not what he told you.
But we're allowed to be here. This is a public meeting.
You may be allowed, but you were not invited in.
Okay, alright. Just pretend we're not here. We're just filming.
I'm gonna turn this and I'll send you guys an update. We'll have another chance. I don't, I don't know who this is, but the good is, is there's sixty of you and there's a few of them, so you guys can do what you want.
Jesus, we were invited in here.
Yeah, I see you guys on uh videos all the time. We shouldn't have learned anything. It kinda gives you away.
What?
Launder your clothes. It looks like you hadn't laundered your clothes in a while.
About the housing.
Yeah. Cause you could've come in and done the whole thing without wearing your, your outfits and nobody would've cared.
Okay, but I'm not gonna tell you what to wear. I'm not gonna tell you to take your shirt off.
No, no, I know.
You don't get to dictate what I'm wearing.
No, I'm just saying that you're doing it on purpose just to cause a rock.
Not at all.
Yeah?
I came here to mind my own business. Everybody's quiet.
Yeah?
Yeah.
You seem to know what you're doing here. You guys take glasses or something?
We didn't do anything. We just stood here.
Well, I'm gonna go uh, so I'll talk to you guys later.
Yeah.
Hopefully not.
Are you moving it to a different room?
That's crazy.
But there are cameras back there. They were filming.
You nitwits. Your guys are nitwits.
Says the one that can't figure out how to turn a camera on, like what the hell?
Idiots, idiots.
Alright.
Get li, get alive, won't you?
We're in the public meeting just like you guys are. Apparently they're moving the meeting, so.
Hey, guys.
What's that? What do you mean? They're having a public meeting that has to be open to the public and we signed in and we were invited in.
Hey, sir.
Yeah. So you're gonna deny the public to go into the public meeting that they moved into another public room?
I'm not sure where those folks went.
They went to another meeting room.
I don't know if that's true.
Okay, well, they're taking the meeting elsewhere and we have access to that meeting. So you're gonna deny us access to a public meeting and you're gonna do that on record? Oh, he's gonna deny us access on a public record. They took the meeting to an employees only beyond this point. What the hell just happened? It's four minutes, like literally four minutes elapsed. What the hell is going on? They were filming right there, what was, like?
I don't know the issue, why did they empty an entire room for four additional cameras?
What in the hell just occurred here? Bro, we were about to leave, we were literally leaving. Okay, we came over here, we saw some gathering people, we were like, oh, let's take a video of that and then we'll take off. Like, so we were doing that, and then some dude yelled at us, and then piqued our interest to figure out why is everyone coming in here, and you know? It is a public meeting, open to the public, and now they've moved the public meeting into employee headquarters. Which I don't think is even legal. So they moved a public meeting over there, and then the officer denied us access, but let all the other public people go in there. So guys, the guy that, on the mic, doing the presentation that shut down the meeting over four additional cameras, they already had two cameras in there. Not to mention there's people recording with their cell phones. Ultimate Karen firestarter, ultimate, crazy.
Where's my Curles meeting about the houses? No, they moved it somewhere. It says they moved it somewhere. Yeah. Yeah, they forced, they went to some employee.
But they did state that they were shutting it down, so.
Ooh, so there is a meeting going on.
Yeah, thanks for asking, this actually, we do first amendment audits, and we get.
Immediate audit?
No, first amendment audits. And by us wearing the mask, is part of our protocol to teach people that you expect privacy in public, you have to create it by yourself. But most people don't take the time to come and ask us that question like you are right now, which I do appreciate that you're asking those questions and not coming as, at us violently. Cause most people just come at us, yell at us.
I heard that one.
I mean, they even, sometimes they even, sometimes they even hit us, you know? And uh, for, yeah, just pretty much to teach people that, you know, you expect privacy in public, you have to create it yourself.
And not just that, but if you don't have people that are actively out there defending your first amendment rights, they're gonna get taken from us.
Yeah, cause you know, like, if you're aware, sometimes they pass laws, that, you know, sometimes they violate our first amendment rights. So if it's not for other people, then slowly they get chipped away. Yeah, but thanks for asking.
Yeah, 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 so where did they move the public meeting to? You just took him to it. What's that?
We're waiting for someone to call, call back. We're just getting, we're trying to get information to see where, where the, where.
Well, I want that information as well, so I'll go wait with him.
I mean, I can get you that, I can find that out for you if you'd like.
Let's find, I'll go wait with him then. No, wait, why, why can't I wait with the other member of the public?
Let me go find out for you.
I think he went in there. Let's see, is he in the window? Look through the window right there.
He's not in there. City employee is way too comfortable, lying to us just right to our face. Um, the gentleman isn't waiting in the room, I just checked. He did get taken back to the meeting. Yeah, what decisions are they making in that room that they don't want the public seeing, other than the few people that show up to the meeting? Like, they almost don't want the information getting out there on a mass scale. What are they hiding in these meetings? That's what we really gotta figure out, guys. Um, can I speak with the city attorney? No, I'd like to speak to him now. Because we're being denied access to a public meeting that's ongoing and moved to a private location, which is unlawful by the way. And that's why I think the city attorney needs to let them know that they're doing something that is unlawful, and they, you guys are opening yourself up to being able to be sued for that. Something about the city, the post office, now this, like what in the hell just happened, we were quiet, we were maintaining our speed, I wasn't even narrating, we were maintaining our distance, we were up against the wall, we were just filming, and the guy freaked out, what's on all these cameras? I gotta shut it down. They moved the private meeting, or the public meeting into private, turned it into a private meeting. Excluding members of the public, which some of them are still downstairs wondering what the hell's going on, but what happened is, they were being told that in front of us, but then we're being grabbed by random people that were then taking them back into employee only areas. That's okay, when they all come out, we'll be here. I wasn't planning on staying here all day, but damn.
Hi.
Hello.
Yeah, I hear you guys have a forum?
Yeah, for the clerk?
Yeah, unfortunately, he's actually in a, in a meeting right now, but I'm more than happy to take it for you.
What's your position, your name?
My name's Lori, I'm the deputy, one of the deputy city clerk, city clerk, or deputy city clerk one. You want my card?
Uh, no, that's not necessary, um, I can give that information really, so what happened is, we were, I wanted to see the written policy on your public meetings. Because there, they, they had the public meeting down there, and there's like three people filming it already, and then we came in, we were invited in by the door person, we signed in, everything. We go in there, and the hu- the host of the meeting had a complete meltdown on camera. Then you guys moved the meeting to private, and excluded us and several other members of the public, which are down, down in the lobby, from the public meeting. So I wanted to see where you guys have a written policy on moving a public meeting into private, based on somebody's disability, based on wearing a mask, based on filming. So.
No worries, I can definitely take that and, and process it through.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Was there anything else you guys need from me?
I'm, I'm trying to figure out who I would talk to in regards to the incident that just occurred, so.
No worries, I'll, we'll take this and we'll move forward.
But you don't wanna help me with the second request?
I, I don't know who would be that one, but I, let me, let me verify for that one, cause I don't know who actually handles this meeting.
Okay, cause I'd like to speak to somebody, cause otherwise I'm gonna stay here all day, I was, I was supposed to be on my home, I don't, I'll stay here all day.
I'll try my very best.
Thank you very much. Tonight's thumbnail. Auditor shut down council meeting apparently. Wow.
News we went into that meeting, the gentleman who was yelling at us, um, about the masks, he went out to the checklist and looked at the names, just to find out that they're.
So, and that's the thing is like, and that's the thing is like, so they've denied us from a public meeting. What if I'm wearing this for disability, what if? How are they gonna challenge that? How are they gonna say that's not true? I actually do have a disability with the sun in my skin, we all know that, I mean, how, how quick do I burn when we're outside, like three, three minutes, and then I have to go back inside? So, you know, there's so much wrong with what happened. What if I had disfigured face, and I, you know, don't wanna be embarrassed and humiliated? What if we're with a disfigured face group, a support group, and we come out and film?
Disfigured face support group, that's what we're in right now.
There's so many instances that, you know, people don't think about, you know? I mean, I've seen some people that probably should be wearing masks, you know what I mean, it's like, come on. I don't know, man. This, this is definitely a I've never had this happen before. The Irvine City Hall is worse than the post office apparently.
Irvine is the worst city ever, like, as far as residents.
Apparently, apparently Irvine is the city of Karens.
It's the city of entitlement, it runs deep here.
Yeah.
Very deep.
This is a liar again, the fantastic liar. He says hey guys like he's our friend, nope. Straight bullshit us.
How are you guys today?
Good.
Tammy Kim.
Are you the mayor?
No, I'm not.
But you're the.
I'm running for mayor.
You're on the board.
I'm on the city council.
City council, I read your history, uh, uh, they had that up here, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Impressive. I had a question while you're here.
Sure.
So we were actually waiting for someone else, they didn't come out, so you guys have a public meeting down here, held by a council member?
Not me, I.
No, 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 but, but they did.
Oh, okay.
Um, and they had cameras in the back, we were invited in by the person at the door. We were filming, and then the guy who was hosting it had a meltdown, all on camera. Move, but then you guys moved a public meeting.
Not you guys.
No, no, well, but you're the city, but, so they moved a public meeting.
It was a, it was his own meeting.
Regardless, it's a public meeting, we can't deny that part, but then they moved it into private, and denied a- access to members of the public, such as myself. And, you know, everyone was like, oh, you gotta take off your mask to come in here, so like, what's your policy on that? I mean, does that become a policy, you can't have a mask on, because what if I'm wearing this for my disability that I have?
Yeah.
Like a disfigured face.
So we don't have a policy as far as, I'm aware, um.
Well, I know for a fact you guys don't, so I'm just saying, why is, but why is?
I'm sorry, I can't answer that.
But you could find answers.
Well, no, I can't answer, I can only respond to like what I would do, and a public meeting is a public meeting.
Yeah.
So, I, I can't, I, I can't speak.
Who's holding the chamber, or the council meeting later at three o'clock?
Uh, that's the city council.
And is that? But you will be there as well?
Oh yeah, of course.
Okay, so here's what I was told, by them, a council member came out and yelled at us, some older gentleman. And said that.
An older gentleman?
I don't know, he, some dude came out and yelled at us, at least representing. I don't know, it is, he, he represented himself as a member of the council, so he could, he could not be, he was pretty old, so, and I didn't see him on the board.
Uh, right here, he's on there right now, is that him?
Shoot. That could possibly be, okay, regardless, but he says, if we're gonna have our masks on, we're not welcome in, and that's wrong. It's not supposed to be a denial of service because we're wearing a mask. This could be for, you know, a disfigurement, okay, it, the disability. It could be because COVID, whatever, I'm allowed to wear this mask, it's not unlawful to, and I'm allowed to be in a public meeting while wearing my mask. So I wanted to make sure that, at least when you're there today, that you're not gonna, you know, try and boot us out.
I, I know, because they, they allow people with masks on.
I appreciate it, thank you so much, no, no, so, um, I did read your bio by the way, amazing, congrats on all of the hard work you, you do, and um, I mean, I think it's an amazing biography, uh, there. Um, but yeah, and, and you've been wonderful, so I appreciate that, so I just wanna make, I just wanna make sure at three o'clock, we're not gonna have any issues getting in and.
I, I don't think you should, but I gotta drop this off and then I'll come back out.
Alright, I appreciate it, no, I appreciate it, no, I appreciate it, thank you. Yeah, 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 cause I need to find out whether the policy is that you guys will turn a meeting into a
Well, I don't know who we are, but it's not we.
Well, city, it was a city person, so you are the city.
Yeah, you know, um, Carl, you met earlier, we're waiting for him, he's at behind closed doors in the meeting, but he should be out shortly. If you wanna give us a moment, we're gonna ask.
I'll be right here, I'm not going anywhere until somebody gives me some answers.
Yeah, so he should be coming out and, um Yeah, I'm just trying to find out what meeting, I'm gonna find out what kinda meeting it was and all that, and then give him that.
So it was the housing meeting that was held here, which is a public meeting, on the, on housing, uh, some housing issues. So we were going in there to learn about it, because, you know, we disseminate to the public the processes of participating in your government. And we were gonna go film it, we were invited in by the door person, and then the person hosting it decided to have a meltdown on camera, which we're gonna post it to everybody.
I'm sorry, to, to, so, i- it is a public meeting that was held?
Yes, it was public, and, nope, it was a public meeting, we were invited in, we signed in, everything, they invited us in. And then the host of the meeting decided to have a meltdown on camera, which is gonna go live here soon.
And do you know who's host?
I do not know his name, and I'm trying to get that information as well, but.
Alright, well, let me find out then who.
Yeah. I would appreciate it, cause then they, then what happened is, they moved it into the employee only area. Denied not only us, but there's four members of the public now sitting in the lobby, who were denied access to a public meeting. It was public, it says public right there on the thing. Yeah.
Okay, alright, well, thank you, give me a moment, we'll call, you've already met Carl, we're just waiting for him to come out, cause he kinda managed.
Yeah, if you could help me look into the matter, I'd appreciate it, I, I would like to know who, who was holding it, so I can hold them responsible. I wanted to ask, is there a reason we were denied to a public meeting, and you locked us out of it? And you guys also locked four other members of the public out of the meeting. You know that's unlawful, right? Like, are you aware that it's a public meeting, we're allowed to be in there filming? No, that's fine, I'm just asking, cause I just wanted to know what your reason for locking us out of the public meeting was. You did, you did not let us go back there. Where they moved the meeting to, and it was a public meeting. Okay, but you enforced us not being able to go back to the public meeting.
You were asking to go back into a secure area, and I denied you access to a secure.
But you let everybody else in the public go. You got it all on camera, like it's embarrassing.
Then you don't need to talk to me about it.
Yeah, I do, I was trying to get your reasoning.
I told you that I didn't allow you into, into a secure space.
Why didn't you allow us?
I, I'm not gonna engage in this.
You can't tell us why you didn't allow us? This is corrupt cop right there, man.
How's it going?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Have a great day.
Remember, uh, one of your channels? Do you guys all belong to the same channels?
No, we have a few different channels.
Okay, you guys don't all work together?
Nope.
Okay.
No, we're all independent by ourselves.
Sometimes we just meet up and collaborate on audits.
Okay, you guys have your own channels and all that?
Yes.
But you guys like, oh, arranged to come to the same place?
What's that?
Is that like, what, do you carpool, save gas?
No, we just, we all meet, we're all from different areas and towns and cities and counties.
And this is first stop today, or?
It was supposed to be a stop that ended a long time ago, but every, you know, we got denied going into a public meeting when it became a private meeting after we were invited in.
I, I was there, I saw that.
Yeah.
Yeah, how did that make you feel?
Feel?
Yeah.
Frustrated, because I'm a member of the public.
Right, right.
Shouldn't the public feel frustrated if transparency is an issue?
I see your point.
I mean, it was a public meeting, held for transparency purposes, but then it was, then it became a private meeting.
I don't know what the purpose behind it.
Alright, well.
How long you been doing this, my man?
A while.
A while?
Yeah.
How long's a while?
A long while. I'm not gonna get specific.
You're cool, I like talking to you. This guy, he has a hostile energy.
Hostile energy, I've been cordial to everybody.
Oh, you have that, yeah.
I just don't answer some personal questions, like, you know?
It's a vibe.
Okay.
Maybe it's the fact that, can't really see your eyes that well.
Okay.
You know, that's how we communicate, right?
Body language as well.
Oh, absolutely.
So when you say that, what if somebody's blind, you're telling them they can't communicate well?
They can't communicate as well as people who are.
You'd be surprised, I have a blind friend who communicates better than a lot of people.
In different ways, in different ways, yeah. Alright. Is there anything else, uh, I can help each gentleman out with?
Do you work here?
I do not.
Okay, then you can't help me at all, then.
Okay. If I was to work here, then what would you, how can I help you?
Well, I'd get your position, so I could decide if you're able to help me.
Uh, okay, well, alright, best of luck, man.
Yeah, they, they were lying, they didn't know where the meeting was.
I know.
Private, is you're allowed to have a private conversation now?
That's ironic in public, though. You got makeup on, it's the same thing.
Makeup, it makes us beautiful, that makes you very.
Okay, not always, you guys put too much on, it takes away the beauty. I love how every woman says they have no makeup on.
You know what, I think that, 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 that it, that it seems intimidating for people, is that what you?
A polka dot mask is intimidating? A polka dot mask is intimidating?
No, I mean, that when you.
Hey, don't touch me.
I'm not touching you. I'm not touching you, but I'm curious about why, why you want to, ask me any questions.
Yeah, you can ask, but you don't have to be all up in my.
I'm not, I'm, I'm trying to get behind the camera.
You're not gonna get behind it.
How come?
Because then you'd be behind me.
But why, why do you want to, to record me?
I'm recording everybody. It's not just specifically you. I'm recording you now because you walked up on me. I wasn't even recording you.
I, 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 I wanted to point out that I think that, that it seemed a little intimidating.
Okay. And you're allowed to feel that way? I, I disagree, and so do a lot of people. We have cordial, the whole time we're here, we're having cordial interactions until that chaos in the meeting down there. And it started with one fire starter and that's all it takes. And all of a sudden you have a whole room full of Karens.
But what's the purpose of the recording?
Public meetings?
No, this isn't a public meeting.
That was a public meeting.
But exactly, and I support you there, but why are you, why do you want to record public, private citizens?
It's, what do you mean? You're in a public, this is a public, you're on city property, conducting whatever business, which, you know.
As a citizen, as a private citizen.
And you're allowed to be filmed and recorded doing so. They're recording you. Look at how many cameras all over this building. They're recording you.
I don't object to being recorded. I object to the in- intimidating appearance. I, I don't object to it at all. I'm just curious about it.
Based on how someone dresses?
No, 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 not that, not that. This entire thing of.
Okay, camera aside.
Yeah.
I'm not allowed to dress like this?
It has nothing to do with how you dress. It's, it's only the obvious filming that I think seems intentionally.
Okay, but there's, okay, so in the back of the meeting, there's the lady with the camera filming and another gentleman.
It doesn't, it doesn't seem.
And her camera was actually bigger than mine.
I know, but it doesn't seem to, cuz you're in a public meeting and you're right. I didn't object or, or don't object now, but I'm just curious why, why, you know, you want to follow people along like how you're doing with me.
Yeah, I'm not, you keep running around me. Of course I'm gonna follow you with the camera.
I didn't wanna be on the camera.
But you don't have that choice. If you came up to me, you weren't even on the camera.
I tried, I tried to ask you a question.
No, no, ask, ask. I'm answering, just ask.
I said, do you intend to, to, cuz sometimes people want to affect outcomes by trying to discourage people from participating, and that's what felt to me.
No, not at all. In fact, we're doing the opposite. We do the opposite. We actually teach people on our web, on our website everywhere how to do.
What is your website?
We don't disclose that while we're working.
Oh, my goodness.
Absolutely not, but we teach people how to submit Freedom of Information Act requests. We submit, we, we teach them how to participate in their government.
Your website is not, is not.
We don't, we don't share it while we're working.
Good faith to encourage public engagement. You know, I think to, to, to encourage people and make them feel welcome is, is good practice.
Everybody here, prior to that meeting, felt very welcome with us. Everybody was asking us questions, engaging, we're having conversations. Nobody felt intimidated.
Why didn't you announce why you were there?
I have to come in and then yell that I'm here for this?
Well, it's, it's obvious.
What do you mean?
I know, I said, why did you not feel like you could, could let people know why you were there?
I did. I, everybody asks, I tell them I were there.
What did you say?
Every time somebody asks, I say, we are here under the exercise of our First Amendment rights to film out in public while also reminding people how much we are being filmed in public and that if you want to demand privacy, you have to create it yourself like I have.
That last point is a very good point.
Yeah, and that's what, and that's literally.
So that would be a good answer when you say.
I, no, no, I've literally told that to everybody here.
When you say, when I said, why are you so conspicuous?
Mm-hmm.
What's a good answer is to say, to remind people that they're being filmed everywhere and inconspicuous ways.
But, and I, I have no problem getting to there, but I had to calm it down a little bit. You were chasing me around in circles, so I, I didn't, you know.
Well, cuz I didn't know why I was being filmed, but now, now I know.
Absolutely. And we literally just teach this out to the public and we also teach people how to participate in their city. We think it's important. And we don't, and I don't think, and I don't care what side of the aisle people lean on. We actually talk, we are completely apolitical and I want people to participate, but they have to participate with knowledge. You get a lot of young voters. It, to let people know, to say, hey, we are, you're being filmed.
All right. I think you should consider your mission and reconsider and be upfront saying, we are here.
We do. If people ask us, we.
People wouldn't feel, they wouldn't feel.
That's not true.
Threatened if you said.
The first person, the first person that asked me was the door person. I told him why we're here. He was the first person.
Well, I know, but when people.
But then I had someone come up. They didn't ask. He just came up and, take your fucking mask off, blah, blah, started yelling. That's not asking. Everybody in this building behind me, including, so there's a, the city council member.
I didn't know why you were here and I kept asking, why are these fucks here and nobody, it's the First Amendment right.
Came out, he asked, we told him. The city council member upstairs came out and asked, we told him.
We are here to remind people.
Absolutely, absolutely, and how to participate. Yes, and how to participate in their government.
All right, okay. Carry on.
You have a beautiful day. So Tammy Kim is the one that invited us in. Michael Carroll is the one that actually had a meltdown about us filming. Went really good, but then chaos erupted. All right, chaos. So you guys saw that. We are back here for the three o'clock city council meeting. We're gonna definitely see how this goes. I don't feel like we're gonna feel welcomed, but hopefully they've changed their minds before they, you know, before we arrive. Um, I'm assuming the city council member that we spoke to is told the other one, shut your damn mouth. All right, guys, we are back here at the, uh, Irvine City Hall. I had to get a selfie with my best friend here, um, Michael Carroll. We're just filming the presentation, you know. But our cameras, because we have chosen to, you know, wear our masks, we're not, not acceptable. And so we, uh, I'm hoping I can get a moment to speak in the, uh, council meeting. I don't think it's an open meeting for public commenting, but if they open it up, I'm commenting. So we'll see that goes. Now, this fine lady, somebody should let her know she did an amazing job. She may not have liked us, um, but she was respectful. She understood what we're doing here, was supportive, told us to come to the city council meeting for the chambers meeting at three o'clock. Tammy Kim, council member, wonderful representative of the city of Irvine. This is to promote battery operated equipment in California, which by the way, does not work for commercial, um, like just for the backpack blower, for example. If you do twenty lawns a day, which a lot of landscapers do for maintenance, you'd have to carry twenty batteries just for that one piece of equipment. Then you add hedge trimmers and weed whackers and lawn mowers. Impossible. You cannot run a landscape business using this kind of equipment. Hey, everyone screenshot this. Never know, you might be able to win.
And I'm just an independent journalist, but that's.
Well, that's sick, man. Keep doing that. Good work.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Yeah.
How you guys doing?
Uh, well, through the exercising of our First Amendment rights.
Yeah.
We disseminate to the public how to participate in government. So how to attend council meetings, how to file for your Freedom of Information Act requests, things like that.
Okay, great. So you, you just go around and film, uh, public events?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, anything.
City, city government events?
That too, but so we also do public filming and photography. We're reminding people how often we're being filmed in public.
Right.
And that if you want to demand privacy, you gotta create it yourself like this.
Oh, okay. Interesting.
So some people will be in public.
Aren't we always being filmed?
Absolutely, and that's the whole point of our message. Is that, so we'll have people that will interrupt people doing photos and videos in public and do so in a, in a violent way sometimes. And so we're here to stand up for that and remind people that you don't get to choose privacy when you're out in public. And if you want to be private, it is you that have to create the privacy that you want, not me to create your privacy.
Do you have like an organization or a website or something?
We, we don't share it while we're working, but yeah, we have all that stuff. It's all online. If you just search up First Amendment auditing, you'll find us at some point.
Search up.
First Amendment auditing.
First Amendment auditing? Auditing?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Absolutely. You have a blessed day.
You too.
So apparently this is where the meeting is gonna occur. All right, guys, as we are prepared to attend this, uh, council meeting here, um, we're waiting for a few more people to come and then we will, uh, head on in. This will be interesting, considering one of the council members tried to elicit violence against us.
Oh, yeah.
But the other one peacefully invited us. Oh, yeah, come through. So what are we gonna do? We will find out, won't we? That's why I was trying to figure out where we'd be able to stand on the edge.
You're fine. As long as you're not blocking anybody, you're fine.
I figured I would stand over here out of the way and.
Yeah, okay. Or if there's no signs, say, you know, keep clear, obviously.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fine.
All right. It's been a long day for you guys.
It has.
You've been here a long time.
It has, but you know, um.
Oh, I came looking for you guys cuz somebody said you wanna see me again, but I came back and you guys already gone.
His name, the council member. Michael Carroll?
Mm-hmm.
Hmm. We got him on video, listening to violence against us on video.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
When we attended, cuz apparently he was, I didn't know his name at the time, but that was who hosted a meeting over there, a public meeting.
Uh huh.
And we got invited in by the people at the door. So, oh, come on in, you're allowed to film, blah, blah. People are filming. There's cameras in the back, people are already filming. So we walk in there and he demanded, do we take our masks off or we can't be a welcome into the meeting? He then shut down the meeting and took it into private. I'm like, it's a public meeting. Like, you can't do that, like, you know?
Yeah, I don't know about the meeting, so I, yeah, but, um, okay.
I just wanted to find out where the, I think I sent another request about.
I saw it come through.
Where's the policy listed that says that you can't come in if you're wearing a mask?
Yeah, I did get it just before I came downstairs, so I do have it.
All right.
But yeah, so all good there. But anyways, yeah, so.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Just gonna mess with my senses here.
So just your name there.
Did I touch it?
No, oh, you can.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. How do I do capital? That's bothering me.
You know, why don't I help you? Go ahead, do the check.
All right.
There you go. And you don't have to give.
No, no, that's fine. That's it?
That's it.
All right.
Are you a lobbyist?
No.
Are you with an organized government?
Uh, no.
Good afternoon, everyone. My provision now, uh, called the order, the special meeting of the city council and special joint meeting with the city of Irvine as successor agency to dissolve Irvine redevelopment agency. The time is three oh five. For the currently called, council member board member Cheryl.
Here.
Council member board member Cheryl.
Yep.
Here.
Council member board member Cheryl.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Attorney, here.
Can I just get called? Perfect. Awesome. Thank you.
I understand, uh, that, uh, executive officer for the county of Orange, under negotiation there again, our price in terms of payment, and last, mercifully, conference with real property negotiators, um, I think we should probably do this and it's good because the room is clear and I don't just sit around, um, and let things happen to me. I'm proactive. So I'd like to ask the chief of police in the city hall, who the four individuals are that have uh, masks on, uh, dark sunglasses on, uh, and that are recording, uh, the meeting. Do we have any information on that? I'd like to have all the information possible, please. I wanted to determine whether I'm, I feel safe enough to continue deliberating as an eight hundred dollar an hour local city councilman. Go ahead. Chief, do you wanna respond to that?
Yeah, thank you for the question, council member. Um, whether the four individuals, they go refer to, remember, I do, um, public that attends these meetings, we don't have the authority to just go up and ask for them, for them to identify themselves.
Okay, um, would they run through a medical check there?
No, they were not.
Okay, so is it possible that we had holding firearms right now?
Anybody that would come in here could potentially hold a firearm, correct?
Well, not everyone comes in with video cameras, tripods, t-shirts, masks, you know, dark sunglasses. I mean, I'm just saying what the four of us are thinking right now. So I'm happy to do my job, but I'm not sure if I should feel safe. So I need to understand what we're supposed to do here cuz I'm not, I'll go back in there and deal with seven closed session items, but I just, and I'm glad the tape's running on my face so you can see my face, okay, public, because, and Susan Sayer, if you wanna bring up that I don't attend these meetings, maybe you ought to think, Susan, about the people that are standing up there. Tammy, myself, Larry and Kathleen might think about that. Okay, Susan? Next time you audit my participation in this, okay? So again, back to the city manager and back to the chief of police. Are, are we okay to conduct this meeting? Is this safe? Is this gonna get more unruly? What, what am I to expect here? Isn't it better that I do this by Zoom?
We have spoken with the individuals earlier today and we're not aware of any threat at this time.
Would they be willing to be searched?
We could certainly ask them if they wanted to, if we're allowed to search them. I'm pretty sure the answer is gonna be no.
Did you inform them, and I apologize, chief, but I don't know. I'm sure I'm safe. I'm not sure. Would they inform that this entire meeting, audio and video is recorded from end to end without fail?
I don't know if anybody informed them of that, but, uh, like I said, whether it is, it is open to the public, if anybody wanted to come in and film it, they're certainly entitled to do so. I'm not aware of any, um, rules that are in place that forbids people from doing that.
Does this feel like it's a coordinated effort for people or for separate individuals?
I, I don't know what their intention is.
All right. Well, Vice Mayor, for the record, I'm not sure how much longer I'm gonna stay here, but I'm happy to go in the back room and do a little bit of things.
Well, let me just say, um, in the, uh, the absence of the mayor, uh, we're now down to four people. And I would hope that my colleagues would cooperate in preserving the quorum, moving a pace through the agenda today and others, but, uh, I would hope that we return at five o'clock and move quickly through the balance of the council agenda.
Susan, you're the last person I would ever call shy.
Can I bend your ear for one second?
What's that?
Can I bend your ear for just a second? That was kinda funny, but no, so like, I, I know you don't really have any say or power or position.
I'm willing to listen.
But, no, it's, the only reason we're here is because he's willing to shut down the news over there. And he did it through the inciting of harm to me and my, you know, fellow people. And he got that, like, he incited harm. And in fact, I just got the transcript back from our editor.
Mm-hmm. That was fast.
Yeah, so we, well, it's all, Apple, everything goes to cloud. That's why we use instead of cameras.
Although it's not perfect, though. I will say sometimes you're like.
No, yeah, yeah. No, but, um, no, he, he absolutely, we got the transcript back, um, and she sent me just a clip it. Um, he straight up said, there's sixty of you guys and there's only four of them. Figure it out and get them the fuck out of here. Like, he was telling them to attack us. And then he's like, and then he reiterated it by saying, go get in their faces, force them out of here, blah, blah, like to the people, the members of the public.
Yeah.
That's why we're here. Not here to do anything. And I, and I even signed up to address it.
He made himself look like an idiot. He told everyone, I don't know the laws.
Everybody, okay? We're talking to everybody, being cordial with everybody who's cordial with us. And it's gone kind of wonderful at the city hall, except for him. And the old man earlier, but him. He's fire starting people. He tried to fire start the chamber. He tried to fire start the chief of police who told him, no, you're shit out of luck. I hate to tell you, but the hell's going on with that dude, man? And I don't know if I have an opportunity to speak with the Irvine police chief, but I gotta give him a ten, ten. Because he shut down the council member with like, no, they're, they're right. You cannot expect the public not to film a public proceeding when they are invited in here. And no, we're not gonna search four individuals out of ten or fifteen individuals that were in the room. Um, what's going on, man? Hey, we got a note for Susan. Whoever Susan is, he doesn't like you very much.
Keep doing it, Susan.
But good job for holding him accountable because it has to do with him skipping meetings all of the time. He literally said, I don't attend these. You, like, how are you holding?
You should attend.
How do you hold your council members accountable if they refuse to attend meetings? So we're not, we're not, we do what's called First Amendment public auditing, so we're not necessarily affiliated with anybody. We just film public exercising our rights.
I like that name.
You have a beautiful name, or you have a beautiful day. You're carrying a big ass bag. What do you got in the bag?
My, a baby doll. You wanna see? I have a baby doll. I have clothing cuz I'm changing.
Okay, you carrying around a baby doll is a little weirder than me sitting here with a mask on.
I have two year old children.
Okay, but they're not here at the moment.
She's staring hard. I was like, what the fuck? I just had to say, I was like, we always get stared at and she fucking.
That was pretty funny.
She went off.
Hey, how you doing? How you doing?
It's almost more obvious that you're recording when you have that shit in your hand.
Guys, we are literally just chilling here until. Yeah, we still get harassed. Like, what the hell? So before I started filming, she was, she walked by, she's like, you guys are creepy, what are you guys doing here, blah blah, like, okay, well, you know? You look creepy, toting around a giant bag on the shoulder, what do you got in the bag? I got a baby doll, okay, that's not, what?
Yeah, I'm just telling someone you have a baby doll in your bag, and you're less creepy than just sitting here with them.
She's like, I got kids, but you ain't got them with you, why are you carrying that thing to city hall? And one of us, one of us has a disability that requires a mask, so. What happened?
Why does everyone just walk up to us and ask?
Why would you walk up to a random person?
We can't even sit in here.
Bro, we're not even pointing cameras at who.
I know, I was.
We're just sitting here.
Walked all the way from here, walking super slow, staring at us, I didn't record until she was like right here. Like, why, why do people feel the need to walk up to strangers and ask them why they're wearing specific pieces of clothing?
On a side note, I can't see where Michael Carroll is running for Senate, but that is what we were told by one of his constituents. Um, so maybe she's got the in buzz, who knows? However, upon Googling him. He has been mixed into a bunch of controversies in his time, uh, sitting on city council. So something I'm gonna say in the, in my minute and a half here, if I remember it. Is that he actually put my safety in jeopardy and the safety of my sons and my friends. But, which forced me and compelled me to come to the city council meeting, because there is no easy complaint process. So I have to come in here and state that, you know, I felt unsafe, I was forced into an unsafe situation because of him. But then he wants to blurt out in a public meeting that he doesn't feel safe because of me. The lady that was fire started, was apparently breaking bread with my homies over there. She's so afraid of them that she fire started the city council, or the councilor meeting earlier. And now she's breaking bread, that's how scared she is. Still like her. I like her, I like her, that's something. Alright, guys.
So you don't wanna have a disparate, um, traffic on your hands, so you didn't allow me, and then you're allowing that, okay?
And here's the way I've always known it, that's why. But even still, I mean, I had, I had never heard that.
So this is what I was told, so everything I have is from the police, like this is all me going through Jasper Kim, so I hope. I hope Jasper Kim is not telling me, and this is what the city family too, that the shirt will be changed. I was going to even pay the money and have a gentleman come and fill out a business license, like it's gonna be dollars for that, it's like, for the money. And then the, the nine days of those, this is having the tiny, uh, like thing that is putting between the great public and city. Everything's done right now.
Yeah, no, and I, and he's, he was all this cheaper club, but I never heard personal, but.
Okay, so then they have to sit like everybody else and have their phone in their locker, same rules for everybody about the stick. Yeah, yeah, they can film sitting down like we are, but they can't be acting like that. It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, they're intimidating people from coming in. Not a higher issue. That's a professional camera that's quite good right now, right?
It's an iPhone.
So you have to have same standards for everybody. So if you're treating them differently because people are afraid of confronting people, the law has to be the same for everybody. But I am, I have it in writing. Talk, talk to Jasper right now, he's aware of. Yeah, now I'm putting him on file and they'll be included in it, because they can't, you cannot allow for them. It's a civil rights violation, I was told, no, it is, it is, because I was told no, and I was told more than an amount of money to be able to film, and I went through the proper process of the city of Irvine right now. And yet.
We'll have to look at that, because I'm not familiar with what Jasper was saying.
It's the same list though, right, like it makes me feel like, who should I talk to and what answer I guess?
Jasper handles our special events, so he might.
I was sent there by, I, the whole process started. He's even responded me.
Is Rob see you anywhere?
Yeah, I was, I have the entire email chain proving that I was specifically asking for city hall to film the same way they are, and then told I was not allowed. So if I would have come, I would have been told no permit, two thousand dollars, all that kind of stuff, but other people can come?
I, I don't know what else I can tell you right now that's.
Yep. This was from you guys, technically speaking, you need a permit, so like you cannot require a permit of us. Yeah? It's, it was ongoing, um, several weeks, because I was moving on and paying for persons for the business license for him to be able to, like they ran me through the, and it didn't make sense to me. And I went all through the different layers of both the city and the police.
I would have told her the exact law, but I don't know what they did to her, so she, she incidentally. Applied for commercial filming, or she's not the case, so that's, I don't think she understood that, but I was gonna actually walk her through the process, but yeah.
I appreciate that, one, one of the rules that we have, once it starts, is the, the hallways.
So I spoke to one of your underlings, and I spoke to the chief already, and I spoke to Ms. Kim, she said that there's fine, as long as it's not a full room. If it's a whole room, we are required to sit down for prior code, but if it's not full, and we're not creating an obstruction, then we're allowed to sit down. So, okay, yeah, I don't have any problem, I don't know, but they're gonna have, I don't wanna, I don't wanna hinder people's view, because, yeah. I appreciate that, thank you, what's your name?
Um, Mark Anderson.
And the number?
Uh, two seven one.
Perfect, awesome, thank you. Yeah, that's why we're, we were told to hug the railing. She's on a mission to fire start everybody. Now, here's the difference, guys, so what happened is she came up to speak and she hired. Somebody to come and video her doing it, that is a commercial hire. You need a permit, and that's what she's complaining about, that we don't have one. I wasn't hired to be here, I'm a member of the public with public interest in being here, I can be here. If she was smart, she would have had a friend come here and film her. She is going off. Yeah, she doesn't even notice so color there. And the dude she's with has a naval shirt on, he should be telling her to shut up. I swear an oath, so for him to do that. That chick is like the extreme of a Karen. What I'm doing has nothing to do with what she's doing or done or whatever. She's over there camacking, I was shooting shit about us all over, uh, to the people up there. Like. Bothered too much? Chain of title to the Irvine company, city of Irvine. That's crazy. You're good, you can go.
Are you filming?
Yeah, we're filming the whole thing. We're not really, it's been a while since I've had to read so much old English. Cause it's chain of title from the king of Spain.
Yes, so that was.
It's impressive, I was like, I was like, what the hell, I was like, no way.
Not represent illegal, but it doesn't represent illegal.
Oh, wow.
That is a nice gesture.
I had my hopes up, there it is. The king of Spain donated a pen, apparently, I don't know, that was great, though. Yeah, it was really cool, I liked. Where did he come from? Where did he come from, what the hell? This lady is dying to get us to sit down, like we are affecting her whole life right now, because we are all the way over here. Instead of sitting down with the audience. And it is destroying herself inside, and she's been telling them, she's told the up part, or the top part up there. She told the chief, she told the clerk, she's telling these people, like, her whole life is affected by us right now, and it's crazy. What is going on? Lady is talking to everybody except for us, about us, and about why we're here without a permit, and how she's gonna sue us. Because we didn't have to go through the permit and business license process. Because she hired somebody to come film her, and I didn't get hired. I don't know if you guys remember, this is the guy earlier that fire started us. And upturned an entire meeting. This chick is going person to person, getting people to sign a piece of paper telling us to leave. That is funny. We're up here, sitting with all the old council members. I wanna share something with you, just so you guys know.
You need a permit, you need a permit. No, you need a permit, first get a permit, then you can talk to them, or take your mask off.
This is not gonna help.
Alright, well, I just wanna, if you wanna hear, I'll explain why, okay.
Do you have a permit, just answer that.
We tried to do the same thing.
Hold on.
Let me ask you this, do you have a permit?
I know why they made her get one, I'm trying to explain that, okay.
Do you have a permit? Do you have a?
I don't need one.
Ask any question, do you have a permit?
I do not need one.
Okay, so you don't have a permit, you cannot film the way you're filming.
Do you wanna explain to her?
Put your trap on down and sit like everyone else.
Somebody, and that's the difference, I'm not here, I'm hired, I'm here as a public member, so.
Appreciate it.
That's what makes it different, so sorry, alright, thank you, appreciate it. No one's blocking the aisle. So I tried to go over and explain to them, the reason they had to get a permit is because she hired. An individual or company to come and do the photography, they hired them, that makes it a commercial transaction. Because you were specifically hired for that purpose. You need a business license, you need a permit the second you hire somebody, if she had just said, hey, friend, come along. Nothing would have happened, everything would have been fine, everything's fine, but that's not what happened. So her husband was saying. But not understanding, I'm trying to explain to them why they needed a permit and why I didn't need a permit, and he didn't wanna hear it, he didn't wanna hear the question or any of it, so. Um, and trying to explain that, and I think that, you know, they've been really professional, so I gotta get the, Irvine PD's been good, and so. Um, but even he was like, they're not gonna listen, he tried to warn me, he was like, it's not gonna do anything, it's not gonna help. And now she says that I'm part of her discrimination lawsuit against Irvine, that she's gonna put me as a named defendant. Because somehow, my presence here today discriminated against her, and that's my fault. Not the city of Irvine, which is the one that discriminated against her. She's down there complaining about us. We always advocate participating in the process. The people that are coming here to participate in the decisions in your community. Come help.
The enforcement efforts include issuing citations and incoming of illegal e-vehicles.
It's just sweeping the whole state.
Um, we definitely prioritize them.
But, uh, I think I'll just kinda turn to the city manager. We get presentations like this. And other experts will be on hand and answer your questions and provide additional details about this project. For more information, visit thecityofirvine.org slash.
Um, about six weeks ago, according to an online poll, out of one hundred local residents. Seventy-seven of those polled considered Irvine community news and views to be advertising. And thirty-one residents of those polled considered it to be legitimate news. And here's an Irvine resident voter also sharing these concerns. The paper provides the description that as an independent newspaper, our mission at ICNV. Is to inform and educate Irvine residents on issues that directly impact their lives. My understanding is that an independent newspaper is free of influence by any government or corporate interests. With that in mind, many are wondering how ICNV could possibly be considered independent. Many have asserted ICNV is unfortunately biased in, in favor of our vice mayor Larry Agan and his interests.
It appears to me that here in Irvine, we also have a national choir in the Irvine community news and views, whose only purpose is to protect Larry Agan. To quote Farrakhan, our mayor, from an L.A. Times article in two thousand twenty. I think everybody knows it's Larry Agan's paper, I wouldn't call it an independent paper if I was promoting myself in it all the time and misleading the public.
Irvine Community News and Views asks its readers, when you look at its website or receive it in the mail. Donate, donate here, support local journalism, so that's what I did, I donated, because I understood I was supporting a local newspaper. So imagine my surprise when I went to the city of Irvine transparency portal and discovered, in fact. This publication directly supports politicians like Mr. Agan, committees like Build a Great Park. And nowhere does it disclose that my money that I donated was going to something political. To understand what I mean, I suggest that all Irvine residents take a minute and follow these directions. Go to the city of Irvine website, to the bottom and look through the transparency portal. Click on FPPC Form seven hundred campaign statements, and under the campaign disclosure statement, click here, yes, it's complicated. And select an advanced search and type in Irvine community. And select an Advanced Search and type in Irvine Community. A hundred and forty pages will come up of money that goes back and forth. Between Irvine Community News and Views and various committees and things that it sponsored. And it's so complicated, it takes a scholar in this to understand it, which apparently is somebody who's been here long enough might know. There's loans, contributions, unpaid bills, payments. Just as an example, if you did the same thing with OC Register or Los Angeles Times, you get two or three that are just bills that were paid for advertisements. These are not bills for advertisements. It's enough money to fund a park in the City of Irvine. I think that we need to closely look at what's happening in our, uh, portal. And I ask that the city attorney actually use the portal to take a look at why Irvine Community News and Views has, its name is LLC, not LLC. It was a slate, it was a committee, it has so many varied names. If you wanna clean this up, Mr. Egan, I think,
Thank you for your comments.
Mary Fowler and Dana C.
It is deeply concerning to witness the actions today of council member Carol in Irvine. Um, it's kind of embarrassing that you are sitting here today. To encourage, or in an attempt to encourage to weaponize the police department against people who are here to film the public process and disseminate that public process. To encourage members of the public to participate in their local government. And you tried to weaponize the police against us. Claiming false accusations of bringing weapons into the council chambers. I'm hearing a lot of, um, corruption accusations here of this council. It's kinda crazy to me that we just happen to be here today. And the only reason we are standing here is because of the actions of Mr. Carol over here. Um, earlier in the day where he tried to antagonize the public to accost and attack us in our presence here. Um, absolutely. On video. Can't refute, can't refute that. Such behavior undermines the principles of democracy and the right of citizens to actively and participate in their local government, which is everything our platform encourages. Is to get the public out here to participate like these people here today. And to discourage that participation and the reckless behavior of council member Carol today is pretty disgusting. It's kinda grotesque, actually. So, that's my time. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to share your comments. Thanks. I think it's very interesting that you developed, which I do have some concerns. But first and foremost, I wanna say that, um, I am an advocate of helping the homeless. Um, I helped them personally. I got to know them personally by dating. I do know that it's an issue, but I'm concerned about the second and third generations of homeless as well, the children who are not within the community. Um, and I'm happy to be a participant in the solution.
So, we are,
You scared me for a little bit because, look, these people on the other side have been trying to dox me.
We're, and we're against that, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that, yeah.
So we actually,
Here's more of it.
We actually teach people to be aware of that happening in public.
Can you please help give me your card or something? How do I get in touch with you?
Um, so.
Because I'm, I'm really like, I'm afraid for my safety. And so when I saw you guys, I was like, are they really? Oh, yeah. So I'm, I appreciate you. Thank you for doing it.
If you have a note thing on your phone, I'll type it in.
Now that I know who you were, I'll be more involved. Is you with me?
We, yeah, yeah, we.
Cause let me tell you something about me. I'm chicken shit.
Well, it's.
But I love this country so much that we can't allow that.
Yeah.
To take, to take control of our country.
There was a lady in there earlier who said Mike doesn't even go to the meetings. And then the fact that he showed up today.
Go to next door, and, uh, they're right here. Uh, that one, that one tried to dox me. His name is Stephen G. Uh huh. Malish, I don't care. I am not, I am, I forgot who they are. Fine. Dude, I got this. So these people, if you go to next door, you'll see what they have done to our community. All we're asking is that we coexist. All we're asking is for peace for everybody. All we're asking is for special interest groups like APAC not to run this country. This country is a great country. We need this country to be for Americans. My daughter has a five hundred thousand dollar debt. She's a medical student. Why? Five hundred thousand, when they are promoting what? They're promoting for Zionism, which promotes what? Racism? They're killing innocent civilians and they lie about it. And they lie about, and here she is taking me. I don't give you permission to take me, ma'am. I don't give you permission to take me, ma'am. And this isn't intimidation. This is intimidation. You see, this is exactly what we do.
That's right. They tried to intimidate us.
They tried to intimidate me, yes. Thank you so much, ma'am.
They tried to intimidate us too, bro.
Thank you.
There's no reason to come after this woman. I just, I'm not, I just came out here and saw her, so I thought it was interesting, just like you did. Why, why are you guys seeing me? So she's brought you here. It's interesting.
She, she just asked us a question.
We're just defending somebody who feels bullied, that's it.
I did, there's no reason to feel bullied. I'm not a bully. Do I look like a bully?
Never know.
Yeah, you never know. You're right. You guys look like bullies.
She says she feels bullied, so we're here to protect her.
That's why we have the police, cause we feel bullied.
Alright.
So it's interesting. We love America.
Ma'am, you don't need to approach her.
I'm not approaching anybody. And what did you get?
No, you're fine. She's not gonna do anything.
This is the First Amendment. I thought you guys are First Amendment.
We are, we are. Absolutely, but you don't need to approach her.
But I don't get my First Amendment rights.
You can.
I'm not, I got personal.
But if she's panicking and she's feeling bullied, you don't need to continue to approach.
Call the police. Call the police, please. Call the police. Please. Please call the police.
Ma'am, you can just diffuse it. You can just diffuse it and just.
Why are you even acting like that?
I didn't come after you. I'm not taking you. I'm not taking you.
You were.
I'm not taking you. I'm not taking you. You cannot here to intimidate me. I'm not taking you. There are four men trying to protect me from you. There are four men trying to protect me from you.
Yeah, because I, I look pretty.
Yes, because you are trying to intimidate me.
Obviously, she doesn't want you near her, so we're gonna stop you from getting near her.
And that's it. That's all. We're neutral party. We're just, she says she feels bullied. We're here to prevent that. That's it.
I'm standing here far away. I'm not.
What is the point?
That's fine.
I just wanna hear what she has to say. Do I not get it right? She's in a public space.
That's her choice. That's her choice. I don't disagree with you on that. You're allowed to hear what she has to say, absolutely. But you can film her, you can do all that, but from a distance, you don't have to approach her. Absolutely. Absolutely.
I feel like this is a reasonable distance.
No, no, you're fine, you're fine. I'm not saying, I don't think right now you're being unreasonable, so.
Have you turned up to me with a camera?
Oh, you've come up to me with a camera.
I didn't come up to you, I didn't come up to you with a camera. Did I come up to you with a camera? Did I take her?
Not today, but other times.
Did I take her?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
It's okay.
Of course.
It's all First Amendment.
Of course, yes.
Yep. Good, we're all good to go. And to move on.
Good girl, share that.
Um, do you need to go out?
I'm, I'm asking for police. I'm asking for the police.
Please do.
I don't know what we got in the middle of it.
I think she's able to help you. There's, uh, somebody. He works for a city, right?
Do you work for the city, sir?
Yep.
I'm asking for police protection.
I got you, I got you.
This one is trying to intimidate me back here. I wasn't talking to her, I was talking to these gentlemen by myself.
I don't know.
I would be better to take you because.
Oh, we filmed everything.
We record everything. We record everything. What happened?
Has she hired you?
No, 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 no.
No, we don't know her.
We literally, she said she felt bullied. She said you were one of the people that helped bully her. I'm just here as a mutual party. I have nothing to do with anything.
I need police. Yeah, because this one is trying to intimidate me.
She's obviously upset. There's no point in antagonizing it. It is what it is. I don't know. I, well, hold on, but, but hold on. I fully do disagree with this behavior, cause she was having a freakout.
I think they're gonna, they're gonna assume it's a, you guys alright?
No, no, we're good, we're good. So this lady said that she feels bullied by this lady. We just stood here to separate the two of them and that's all we're here for. I don't, I don't, I don't know what they're going on about. That's between them.
That's now.
But she would like an escort out, I'm pretty sure.
She was kinda just hiding behind us.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know what. I don't, I, like I said, I don't, I,
It has a long history.
No, no, that's fine. I'm not here to pick a side. I'm not here, but I am here to deescalate a situation that was happening. She said she felt bullied. We're here to protect and that's it. I don't, this isn't my job.
I'm just letting you know that there's a long history and she's.
And that's why I don't make a decision. Yeah, and that's why I'm not making a decision in this moment. If it was you, I'd be doing the same thing. Whether you like me or not, I would do the same thing for you if you told me somebody was bullying you.
The only thing I don't like about you guys is your masks, and I don't know why.
And that's fine.
You have your right, I guess it's not, it's not.
No, absolutely, absolutely.
We will try to make that change, but.
You know, it won't change, but it is a First Amendment protected, yeah.
Yeah, I, you're right, no.
Now I, now I understand her, then.
Well, there's, I, I'm not picking a side here. I'm just.
No, no, there's no sides. Just know that she's been a bully for months, so.
Yeah. It's just if you, if you had come out and said you feel bullied and she was following you, I would, I would have defended you. Whether you like me or not, I would have stood in front of you and protected you. It is what it is, so. I think she's getting a little bit of an education about public filming right now, though, so that's a good thing. I mean, if she wants us to walk into her car, we'll walk into her car. I don't care. I just, I wanna go home. Literally, I was about to leave earlier and then the councilman lost his shit. We were supposed to be gone at like eleven. Oh, this is great.
Yeah, we definitely got to go next door.
Anyways, my name is Jake, by the way.
Hi, Jake.
So, since you're, what happened? But to who? What do you mean? Are you the one that came up, talked to us on the stairs? I was preemptively a little upset. Absolutely. And I do apologize for that part, but. It's not that handsome. My wife said this is better. It scares people if I don't wear it. But just to, just to help explain real quick. Yeah, yeah, just to help explain real quick what we do. No, no, we're fine. We're fine. So through the, through the exercise in our First Amendment, right, we do public filming and photography, part of, uh, apparently. So, part of what we do, not all of, but part of what we do is we also, uh, go to public buildings like this and we teach people, we disseminate, we post online, how to conduct and hold your, uh, you know, council members, things accountable. How to hold your police chiefs accountable, things like that. Filing complaints, FOIA requests. We walk them through all those processes.
Right, we've been trying to do a lot of that.
I'm self-funded. I'm retired, so I do this all self-funded. So, what we do, we're, we're, we're always open to activism and, you know, assisting with causes that, you know, are, you know, again, people causes, you know, standing up for our rights and freedoms in this great nation. Now, you guys think this is ridiculous. I'm on that boat. I, I, no, 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 no. I, I just wanna, no, no, I wanna say, I think this is ridiculous too. Let me explain why we wear it, okay? We, through public filming and photography and through being here, we have, you know, people like Mr. Carol, who came up and, you know, decided earlier to, you know, you can't film you can do, but, you know, demanding his privacy in public, which you don't get to demand. So if you have to create it yourself, so.
I just gotta tell you, the problem with you guys like this here today is, has to do with the five months of history of the protests, the protests that she's a part of, coming in masks with dead babies.
Fake dead babies.
Spewing anti-sex, saying Jews are pigs, they were Jewish. And it's been a problem.
And I disagree with a lot of those antics.
I believe that you do, but you have, we are traumatized by it, so when we see masked people, we assume you were them.
But how do you?
So bad assumption, but I'm telling you, there's been a history and they've shown up.
That's why I wear the, the, the.
But it doesn't matter. They've come with their terrorist masks and we know they're funded by terrorists and she's part of it. She's been at UCI, at USC, she's part of all the, and she has her right to protest. Don't get me wrong.
So this is what we see.
Oh, no. The puppy. The puppy.
That's what we see at our city council meetings.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, no, I was just gonna get a picture of that picture.
Oh, okay, I'll, I'll give it to you in just a sec, sorry.
Anyway.
You're fine.
No offense, and I just wanted to get her on tape because I thought she was coming out here.
You're fine. The only thing I saw was damsel in distress and that's it. We just moved in on that, so.
This is him carrying a fake dead baby?
So.
Okay, and then, um, this is somebody else. So you can see why we would think that you were part of that group because it's very similar, although the colors are not the same.
Yeah, yeah, you know, not, that's why it shows the red in polka dot today.
And, um, and then, great parenting, right?
Yeah.
Just edit the baby's, little boy's face. But great parenting, right? Yeah, so you can see that we've been harassed here.
Yeah, well, and so we have, we have this weird, you know, we try and stay in the middle lane cause we do believe in protesting and exercising rights.
I asked why you guys were filming.
So we definitely believe in protesting and I don't care what side is, whoever wants to pick which side. There, there, there is, there should be a dichotomy about it, though.
Yes.
And, you know, at the end of the day, I'm not here to promote whatever she, she's doing. I'm not here to promote what you're doing.
I'm not promoting anything.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, and I just, I just want, we wanted to make sure everyone was safe in this room in that moment and that's all I cared about, so.
She is promoting, but I'm not. I'm promoting my, my rights to live peacefully in my city that I've lived here for almost twenty-seven years, so. Yeah, so anyway, but I'd rather you not put me on your website.
You're so beautiful.
Well, I wish I could see your handsome faces too.
I'm not that beautiful.
Alright, gentlemen, I'm going home.
Alright.
Thank you for understanding why we were so.
No, 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 I, I'm, I'm.
No, we were just not taking sides. We were just defusing the situation.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't care what's, if you are taking a side, that's your opinion. It was, it's just okay for us to see.
I just wanted to see it diffused and that's all I cared about in that moment. I was hearing her out a little bit, just like I heard you guys out, but in the middle of all of that happened a bunch of chaos. No, no, you're fine. You're fine. You guys have a blessed day. Bro, they're closed already. I, I don't know what to do with this day, man. This is, this is, I came here to show, I, I came here to show this gentleman how to file a FOIA request. And we're talking about corruption. We're, we have a council member trying to get this, the, the police department to search us and, holy crud, man, this is crazy. And then at the end there, I'm not getting in the middle of any of that right now. Guys, when the police came in the lobby, immediately, the looks on their face, they assumed it was us. I'm just like, no, I'm just keeping these two separated. I have nothing to do with this. Uh, this is why I don't state my beliefs and my opinions and my politics and, you know, um, all of that. Um, geez, now I'm kinda like, so she asked me for her, or she asked me, she asked me for, uh, my email and I didn't give her my real email. I just wrote something down.
Oh, did you really?
Yeah, I just misspelled it and like, I was like, I don't know what's going on, but here's my email.
Oh, yeah, I, I was looking at the paper and I was like, that doesn't look like a real email.
I was like, I was like, yeah, I don't know what I'm gonna do here, so I just, I don't, I didn't, yeah.
What did you even write down?
I don't remember. I misspelled the hell out of my email. That's what I did. But, yeah. That was, uh, fuck. Not what I expected coming to City Hall today, Jesus.
Thank you for watching Impact Media, your go-to educational channel for all things public filming. We hope you found our content informative and engaging. Remember, your support is crucial in spreading our message far and wide. So, if you enjoyed this video, don't forget to hit that like button and share it with your friends and family. By doing so, you'll help us reach more people and make a positive impact in the world.